Okay. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. This is the Rica City Council for June 4th, 2024, for our closed session at 5:30 PM. And at this time, I'll open up for public comment. No public comment this time, so I close public comment and go into our closed session. Getting ready, everybody, welcome to the Rica City Council for June 4th, 2024. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. Just want to remind everybody to silence their cell phones for us. And just, we have no reportable action on our closed session meeting that was held at 5:30 today. Okay, so this is, we'll go to item number five, this is special presentations and our announcement, this time slot is for informational presentations, appointments, or awards being presented by the city council or to this, sorry, or to the city council, Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there are no special presentations this evening.
Okay, and then number six, public comments. Public participation is welcomed and invited at all city council meetings, this time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comment concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the city council when that item is open for a public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members recognized by the mayor may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the posted agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under the public hearing or new business sections of the agenda, please address the city when that, or city council, when that item is open for a public comment. Please speak in a microphone from the podium, the podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies, these become public record. Please leave remarks to five minutes. Since the council is unable to take action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or placed on a future agenda. The public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with the council or city staff. Public comment at this point?
Good evening, city council members, my name is Louise Cleado and I'm here to nag you. Last year, before the council convened for the year, I was told, and I can't remember who said it, maybe it was Jason, that I had requested that we have like a time clock so that people who, the public got up and speak could see when their time was up because that kind of make, takes some of the pressure off of you, makes you less nervous, makes you more confident in speaking. And I noticed that nothing has been done, so I'm reminding you again, could you please do that? The Board of Supervisor has that when you go to their meetings and that's very helpful, so again, please consider it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, John White, Wired Resident. This is your bi-monthly Greenway and Greenhorn Park update. We're going to go ahead and start with the Greenway at Oberlin. I have to say, I have never seen it worse in my life. There are thirteen plus illegal camps on the trail. Trash dumps actively going on in and around and into the creek, and by the way, the salmon had fried, probably steelhead are in the creek, I saw several hundred. There's six plus stolen shopping carts full of trash laying around in that area also. And believe it or not, today I was taking my walk down there and I heard something, and by God, if I can hear it behind me without these hearing aids, and you know it's coming pretty fast. It was a silver Subaru car driving down the Greenway pathway. I noticed it earlier, it was parked at one of the homeless, or not, I'm not going to say, the illegal camps, and they were loading up what appeared to be car mag wheels, so Chief, if you're missing some mag wheels, I kind of have an idea where they might have gone. Anyway, it was driving down this road, down the trail and towards the overpass and got up on the dirt road and off it went, so you really got to do better, ladies and gentlemen, making sure that thing gets cleaned up. They, they're also open non-buried cesspool areas all over that area. But my main concern, of course, is the trash into the creek when we have potentially one of the last remaining viable salmon populations that can repopulate the Clamath River, that ever happens. The Greenway at the Welcome Center, graffiti is still on the bridge, we know that, probably going to be there forever. They have been doing some work down there, half of it's been weed-eated, there is a shopping cart in the creek at the lower edge, oh, by the way, on the Greenway at Oberlin Road, half of the bridge across Waireka Creek is in, the other half is not, that is not handicapped accessible under IDA. So you need to get that other one in so that people in a wheelchair can get across that creek without falling in. I could hardly imagine what's going on with that. I'm going to reread you the, my report from April for the Greenhorn Park because nothing has changed after two months, except of course, the stamp mill roof is gone, you're going to have to replace the whole thing now versus just re-roofing it. The vandalism to Blacksmith Shop, the walls kicked in into the enclosed shop area. Also, the open shop area has yet to be repaired, sixteen, eighteen months now since the first report. Vandalism of the stamp mill is also available, is also present, same as last time. One of the main things you've got to get out of there are those dead trees along that main trail. There's a widowmaker right next to the trail, one wind, and that thing is coming over, it's already just hanging over off that, you've got to get that out of there before it falls on somebody and you'll be having more closed sessions. Sidewinding a trail is still impassable. It hasn't been cut out yet, it'd take three hours, and that includes an hour walking in and cutting out and an hour walking out. Get that trail open so the people can use it. Again, there's two dump, dumps still up there, the homeless camp dumps in those areas that do have seasonal creeks that again flow right into the our backup water system, I suppose, and by the way, there's going to be a golf disc attorney up there, so, and it's sanctioned, so there's going to, you know, there's going to be a lot of people there. Let's try and get that, a few of those things cleaned up so we can have a little pride in our area, thank you.
Waireka City Council, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin, I noticed that it says residents can do public comments and I'm not a resident, may I proceed?
Just say your name and yeah.
Jay Perkins, I live up guys Gulch. However, I've lived and worked in Waireka for thirty years, I've shopped in Waireka for thirty years, I've bought several cars in Waireka. I have bought appliances, I've bought furniture, so needless to say, I call Waireka my home, but I can't vote for you and I can't vote for this resolution that you'll be talking about today, however, I will be a benefactor and I will be paying for it. I want you to know that I think it's absolutely the most beneficial thing that this city could do would be to jump into the next century, into the next millennium, if you will, but to get yourselves well-positioned with a new fire station and with paid staff twenty-four hours. I just think it's awesome and I will vote with my pocketbook because that's the only way I can vote, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, that will move on to item number seven, this is the consent agenda, all items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove any item for discussion. A, approval eradication payments issued from May 12th, 2024 through May 25th, 2024. B, cash balances, budget, actual and fiscal performance reports for April 2024. C, quarterly investment report for March 2024. D, approval of amendments for the special meeting held May 21st, 2024. E, approval of minutes of the radar meeting held May 21st, 2024. F, approval of amendments to Resolution 2024-24A, Resolution, Rica City Council, City of Rica, California requests the Board of Supervisors of the Siskiyou, County of Siskiyou to consolidate a general municipal election and statewide general election to be held on November 5th, 2024. Direct the city council, sorry, the recommend city council action before you use the motion to adopt consent agenda of the city council of the city of Waireka as presented. Councilman Cake?
Like the motion still moved?
I have a motion from Councilman Cake.
I'll second the motion, Councilman McCoy.
And second for Councilman McCoy, I'll do roll call. Councilman Cake?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
And Middleton, yes. Motion passes, five to zero. Okay, no public hearing, no new business. Okay, city manager and staff report, city manager and staff may make. Wait, did I skip something? Nope. Did I skip something? Sorry, I was like, wait a minute, I skipped way down here, sorry. Hey, I know, I was gonna say, well, what are we moving along, I said, did I, I know I skipped something, sorry about that, people. Okay. Number eight, old business, city manager, city attorney. This is item A, agenda title, approve resolution, oh, you want to go ahead, Mr. Ledbetter or Andrew, I don't need to read. Sorry about that, I skipped way down. My screen went way back.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Waireka City Council members, this is Jason Ledbetter, I'm the city manager, so this evening we have an item really kind of packaged together that we've been discussing for the last several months and ultimately, we are here kind of asking for the possibility of approval of a resolution to, to place a ballot measure before the voters on the November 5th, 2024 general election to approve a 1% transaction and use tax finding exemption from SEQA. And so essentially, this is the resolution of the city council of the city of Waireka, California, on its own motion, calling an election for November 5th, 2024 to consider an ordinance on a proposed 1% transactions and use tax, otherwise known as a sales tax, to be submitted to the electors of the city of Waireka, requesting consolidation of that election with the statewide general election on the same date, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure and finding that the adoption of this resolution is exempt from SEQA. So anytime that a city council would like to put something on a ballot initiative, it requires a two-thirds vote. So in the instance of our council with five members on the council, for us, that is a four-fifths. So as the recommendation this evening that we have brought forward, if it were to pass, it would require four of you to vote yes on this item. Additional streams of revenue are needed for city general government services, this includes the necessary staffing, equipment, pardon me, and the physical improvements associated with the fire department. A general tax would not be earmarked for fire safety issues and could be used for any general use for the cit, of the city. Before the council for a resolution, or before the council for a resolution to place on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot, a measure asking the voters to approve adding chapter 3.51 as an ordinance to the Waireka Municipal Code, the city voters would be asked the following question. Sales tax to generally fund essential city services, and I am on page sixty-two of eighty-two of the packet. This is how it would look hypothetically on a ballot if approved this evening. So, sales tax to generally fund essential city services to maintain and improve essential city services including local firefighting and emergency medical response, hire and train firefighters, upgrade, replace aging firefighting safety equipment, life-saving tools, and an outdated fire station, shall an ordinance be adopted to impose a 1% sales tax providing approximately $2.4 million annually for general government use until ended by voters with independent audits and all funds staying local. So fiscal accountability of the tax revenue will be insured through annual audits. Staff has proposed a draft resolution calling the election and including the draft ballot question for the council's consideration and input. The motion to approve the resolution must also identify two council members to prepare and file the argument in favor of the measure. So this evening, today's recommendation is for the council to approve the resolution calling an election for November 5th, 2024 to consider an ordinance on a proposed 1% transaction and use tax to be submitted to the electors of the city of Waireka. Two, requesting consolidation of that election with the statewide general election on the same date. Three, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure. And four, finding that the adoption of this resolution is exempt from SEQA. And so we also have Chief Lemos here tonight that I'd like to bring up and, and basically answer any questions that the council may have. Ultimately, I just want to kind of learning a few things here from our city attorney. This hypothetically is a resolution that requires a four-fifths vote if we were to move forward. The ordinance, how we normally do an ordinance is a first reading here and then at a, at a future meeting, generally the, the very next meeting, there's an adoption of an ordinance. If this were to reach the ballot, the first reading of the ordinance is considered the ballot itself and how it does with the public. And if it were to pass, the adoption then comes back as a formality essentially to the city council to move forward with that particular ordinance, so you're not here approving any ordinance, we're, this evening at all, this is just the resolution and it showcases the ordinance on the back end that would be basically provided, you know, hypothetically to the voters to vote on this particular thing, which would then in effect be the first reading of that ordinance, so. Is that clear as mud? I don't know. Makes sense to me, but I've heard it probably twenty times now, so. But I do want to call Chief Lemos up to maybe answer questions, obviously, our city attorney is going to be highly involved this evening as he has drafted all this documentation and can answer questions that you may have, but I think it's important, and I know having talked to council members that I think that they really want to take the, the fire chief and the volunteers and consider their opinions of this matter and how they want to move forward, and so without further ado, I'll have Chief Lemos come up in field questions and if he has any commentary, now would be the time for it.
Thank you, Jason, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I say, I'm here to answer questions that you might have or maybe clarify things that you might be concerned about, but yeah, so ask away.
Council members, questions or comments for Chief Lemos? Councilman McCoy?
Chief, I want to thank you for being here tonight. And I appreciate how you've kind of shepherded this along and you've given us some good insight. But I mean, for me, before we start looking at the finality, which is where we are now, can you tell us, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, how do the firefighters feel about this measure? What are their thoughts on it? How do they feel about it? How do they feel about the money that could be realized from the measure?
Well, to be quite honest, going back to, I'm not sure what the date of that letter was, Jason, that I sent you regarding the, you know, the first poll that we took amongst the department. And that's been some time ago, so in that case, as you recall, it was, they were in favor of a general tax, the first option, which I believe is what we show in the resolution here tonight, so. Having said that, you know, there wasn't tremendous discussion on it, I think they were you know, excited that there was something on the horizon to give them some, some relief. And quite honestly, the, the general tax is more palatable, I think, in their minds, I can't speak for every, everyone to a person, but in order to get this, you know, you have to meet that additional sixteen percent electorate, it's pretty hard to do, so I think the fifty percent plus one, the general tax is more. The reason why they have voted in favor of that was to, you know, try to get this accomplished in, you know, hopefully the first, the first try. As you know, we've been down that road before with Measure H and it took three tries. And I don't think you can ever stop trying to accomplish this goal. It's that important, if there's, as Mr. Perkins put it, yeah, this is one of the most important things I think the US City Council members will, will face in your tenure, hopefully there's other things that are equally as valuable and will be equally as important, but in my view, since I've been in the fire department, Measure H was the first one, which is, we've been good stewards of that money, I can tell you, and we have everything paid for and everything is, all of our apparatuses, you know, on the, on the newer side. And we'll, we'll get good use out of it. A little slightly different than what we're looking at today, but it's also, you know, important to, as, and also Mr. Perkins said, I can't deny that he's correct, is step, we're behind, step into the next century and help us move forward. So to wrap it up with views of the membership, I haven't had overwhelming discussions with, with anyone in particular. More or less, my, you know, my assistant chief and some of the folks that I work with more closely, but I would say if you go back to the meeting when we had them all, a lot of folks here and they were speaking to you about their experiences, if that doesn't tell you that we need to do this and that they are for something to get them some relief, I don't know what would, but that's, that's all you need to know in, in my mind, because they, they live it every day. So, and I couldn't do it without them, they're, but there's going to come a day when some of those folks aren't going to be here and we're struggling a little bit right now because two of them went back to work. Other state OES folks are on fires down south that you know about in Tracy, in that area, Stanislaus County, San Joaquin. So that's the nature of the beast, paid staff will get us to a point where we can provide a, a more consistent and long-lasting service to the citizens, which they deserve.
I appreciate that, and I just have one more, and I know I'm going to put you on the spot, but I ask you because I know that you know your firefighters, you know your staff the best. What do your firefighters want to see the money used for?
They want to see the money used for what is what we look at as, you know, relief for them, so, so they don't have to get up at three, four in the morning and deal with whatever the, whatever the medical call is, I mean, fires, sure, everybody wants to go fight fire. They want to see us grow as a department and become become a department that they, they know that they can be, help be a, be a part of and help improve it. You know, when they're constantly running, running medical calls and call, and calls that are, you know, not of an emergent nature, they, they tend to get a little soured, if you will. But they want to see, they definitely want to see a new station, you know, that, that has generated a lot of, a lot of interest, I haven't shared with them some of the, some of the pictures I have, just because I don't want to get their hopes up yet, but I'm sure when that does happen, that will be, you know, elation beyond words, because it is, they've done a good job, so. New station, paid staff, I mean, they're, they're all for it, and it will, it will change things, it will change how we operate on a daily basis, so, you know, there's, there's still support for that, even though it could mean some of them are going to have a little different role. I see it as an opportunity to, to improve us to the point where, like I said, we're going to be providing a better service to the citizens regardless, so.
Thanks, that's, I appreciate that, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy, thank you, Chief.
Just, okay. Just a quick question. I know you guys have been doing a lot of promotion and going out there and talking to a lot of groups and individuals and whatnot. What is your future plans on, on more public awareness on what this means to you guys and to the city?
These, the videos that we had with Siskiyou Media Council, we're going to keep, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but we're going to keep playing that periodically through the, the months between now and November 5th and then have one additional one on the needs and the current condition of laystation, which is, you know, I think also very educational and will help the citizens understand, you know, firsthand through photos, et cetera, and stories of what's going on in the past, you know, the, the different dilemmas we've had with the structure, so. You know, those things, we'll play those periodically throughout the, the next five months and, is that right? Yeah, five months. And go from there and hopefully that will answer their questions, any other groups that, that we've possibly missed or weren't aware of or get requests to, we'll gladly go, you know, speak to them as well, which I think so far we've had, if I'm reading people correctly, I think we've had a lot of support, a lot of support and very, very good comments. My firefighters have expressed to me that they've met people on the street, don't even know who they were, sometimes they do know them and thank them for when they came to their house or whatever, but, but they get a lot of kudos that I wasn't even aware that it happened until, you know, somewhat recently, but those are the ones that keep them going, so. But we'll keep, we'll keep educating, we'll keep, you know, stating the, the needs that we have and, you know, answering questions, that sort of thing. We have a pancake breakfast come Father's Day, so we'll have people there to answer questions as well. So it's just, day by day, you just keep pushing, and I think, you know, a lot of people are, we're, we're not aware initially of our situation and I think now most of the, most of the citizen, most of the citizenry is aware of what's going on, so it's already helping, so.
Thank you.
We bet.
Thank you, Councilman Cake and Chief. Councilman Baker?
I, I actually have a couple of questions, but they are for the city manager and our city attorney, so I don't know if now is the appropriate time. Okay. So I just have a comment and a couple of questions, I don't want to muddy the water here, but I have heard from several people that they are preferring a special tax, which has a higher threshold of passage. And that's because they want to see total transparency and how this money is being spent. And in this measure itself, it talks about independent audits being conducted. And so is that an accounting of this tax money that will be coming in and showing how it's actually being spent?
This is Jason Ledbetter, and then if I misspeak or there needs to be an addition, Andrew Jared, the city attorney can chime in as well. But the city is audited annually, and so ultimately as part of that audit, this tax measure would be audited as well, and then ultimately through the budgeting process and the approval by city council that's mandated for the budget, we do a two-year budget, but ultimately you are approving a budget every single year, we bring it to you annually. Those are the measures that we're talking about within the audit and the transparency, and so the auditing would be done by the firm that comes in and does our by the firm that comes in uh and does our independent audit of every other accounting uh or account that we currently have. Uh, but if I'm missing anything, Mr. Jared.
Um, thank you. So there is transparency um with the, just the general tax.
Yes, yep.
Okay, so that's a fair statement, I think.
If I could just add, if I could add that we put this into the language of the text that will be in the city code itself. Um, based on prior discussions uh about this, this ballot measure. Uh, the, the issue of the audit had come up, it'd been mentioned in staff reports. It had been mentioned in uh the text of resolution and so forth. When I was drafting the actual text of the ordinance itself that will be put into the municipal code. And that's on page eighty-two of the packet. And section three point five, one point one five zero, audit and review. Um, that's some language that uh I took from another ballot measure that we're working on uh that our firm is working on for another city. And I, I put it in here in your um text as well. Previously it hadn't been in there. And it is to uh in- ensure that um that these monies are part of that audit.
Thank you so much. And then um Mr. Jared, I have a question for you. I'm just um curious, are there any prohibitions against uh elected city council members um basically um campaigning for or against this, this measure?
The, the, the rules on, on that, i- it's not only uh council members, it's um, it's any city funds being used to um, you cannot expend city funds to support or oppose um a ballot measure or a candidate. Um, so using public funds to do that um i- is forbidden. Um, there are some ways that um cities can participate in educating about um what the tax means. Um, you can also talk about what the uh, the budget woes of, of the city are. Um, but taking the next step and therefore you should vote for, you can't do that. But to educate, this is, this is the, the nuts and bolts of it. This is what the tax will do. It will raise this kind of money. This is how it works. Uh, this is who will be um the scenarios in which it will be applied. Um, and then these are the kinds of things that it would be spent on. This is our budget situation. That's all very much available to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Baker. Council Davis.
Chief, this is kind of at you here. Um, how often do you meet with the YFD fire?
Uh, we have business meetings every second Monday and then trainings on the third and fourth Mondays. And we discuss prior to breaking up and going out and training, we, we discuss uh business items that may have come up. And this was just happened on our last training. I asked again, is the timing of it is kind of difficult to hit prior to the council meeting. So I discussed with them things of this nature, which I did last, last Monday. And says, everyone's still on board with in what we, what we voted on, you know, prior to and the, still in favor of the general tax. And it was unanimous that that was the case.
Okay.
So, you know, I wanted to bring that up earlier, but it wasn't the right time. Yep.
Um, what was about the, the sales tax uh initiative come up often? And I assume that that was uh what you said. Did you discuss it at least once a month? Then you have a feeling of your uh firefighters that they would like to sales tax and to be a general tax?
Yes, that's the um, the overwhelming um, the overwhelming theme is, you know, we need this because we are absolutely, we've gone beyond the needs or we've gone beyond the, the ability to, not ability to, but it's difficult to do it with the volunteer staffing to, to address this many, this kind of call volume. And in order to rectify that, this is the next step so that we can focus on other things, you know, more focused on firefighting and vehicle extrication, et cetera, where they know that the medicals are being handled by paid staff during the day and, and at night they can, you know, not be, you know, getting weary from running calls, you know, all through the night. So though, all those things play into it um in terms of their uh favor of uh, of this general tax, of the tax itself, but especially the general tax. And with that, the hopefully the easier way to get this thing passed and sooner.
The building of a new fire station probably will actually increase the number of firefighters you have. And if we try to get medical, which is kind of where we're headed, I believe that we will have a lot better situation. So.
Right.
I'm in favor of what you're talking about, Chief.
Right. Um, yeah, I've talked with firefighters before and we've all kind of agreed that um, you know, uh, not just having a new facility, but making it more functional. And, you know, the ability for folks on, you know, during the wildfire season too, if they're, or even if they're running a lot of calls, which they do now, sometimes they'll stay the night and, you know, we have sleepers now that are back working for Cal Fire, but you know, that's always an option for them. So the new station would have, you know, better accommodations. Uh, we would have more, more room for our, for our gear. And, you know, just anything you can think of, it's um just going to be better all around. And, you know, I think honestly, it is going to be an attraction for for other firefighters to go, hey, they have some opportunities there for me. I want to, I want to go check it out. So, I mean, all those things do play into it. So, yeah, they're all in favor of a new station and paid staff.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Council Davis. That's my turn. I know most of us know and the citizens, but um and we know it's a big ask to stand up here and, you know, for a city and as you as a um, the chief to ask the city to pay more money wherever, whenever they go buy something. We know it's a big ask. Um, when it's already a lot of things are on the rise already. So it's a big ask to ask this, um, these citizens shall, we do this tonight. Can you tell us, and I know we've heard it and maybe most citizens sitting in our audience have heard it. Where do you see the future of the fire department? Should you not receive, whether it be this year, this funds, if it does not make it, where do you see the future of the fire department? If it doesn't make it this year, if it doesn't make it in two years, where do you see the future of your fire department, brother, your staff? Where do you see the Wariqah City Fire Department?
That's a, that's a very interesting question. And I do think about it because I think if, if you put in thirty years, which will be about two weeks, I'll, I'll hit my thirty year mark, which is just a number. But it's a lot of, it's a lot of things that go into that, right? And I think if you've done any time in this, in any organization, you wonder when you leave. Not saying I'm leaving, I'm just saying I know talking to other firefighter, you wonder what it's going to be like. They're all curious. They come down and how are things going? And they want to know. Um, and I'd be no different. I'd want to know that you left it in good hands. Or down the future that someone that you uh mentored and you fostered them into the department that um, that department is still strong and they're able to contribute and it's not falling apart at the seams. I mean, that is, that is probably paramount to, to what, you know, we all try to prevent from happening, right? But if, if this doesn't pass, um, and we're going to continue looking at options, you know, and we'll keep, just like we've been doing. But what I can't guarantee is that there's always going to be enough volunteers to get the job done. I can't guarantee that when, when you call or anybody in this room call, anybody in this city calls, that at that time, ten years from now, who knows what's going to happen within the development of the city as we, we maybe grow a little bit. And, you know, we get more housing, whatever the case may be, it doesn't matter, that you hear that there were not enough people to, to volunteer and they, we had major fires going elsewhere and there wasn't a response or there was a, a vastly delayed response. Those are the things you worry about. Have been able to have some control as chief about how we operate on a day-to-day basis. As long as the crew we have now in, in some form or fashion is there, I'm not concerned. Well, we, we have mutual aid, we have those things. But if we don't, if we aren't successful in getting the, the uh, this ballot measure passed, it's going to be more of the same for the same people and those people are going to go. And then you got to start over with new, new folks and get them trained up. And eventually you're going to run out of the, the most dedicated folks and then you're not going to have, you're not going to have much of anything, to be quite honest. I mean, it's, it's hard to put into words. I, I thought I could answer it okay. If that makes sense to you. I mean, you, you work, you strive to train together, but if you're always having to have new, new folks on board. I mean, now we've got several new folks, but they're doing such a great job. I'm, I'm not concerned, but I also want to keep them for the future. And that's how you build. That's how you build a strong firefighting force, if you will, response force. Uh, so I think that's about the best way I can put it without dragging it on for a half an hour. I think you, you lose what you've already invested money in.
Right.
That's, that's the, the nuts and bolts of it. So.
But you give in the harsh reality. I kind of went a long way of asking it, but you give us the harsh reality of it, of the future, whether it be you know, the money for whatever, you know, what it's going to be used for or staff. And um, where do you think the momentum is for your department today? I know when I took my seat four years ago, three and a half years ago, that the volunteer ship was at, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, you can correct me. I think it was at a pretty uh all-time low. I think it was fourteen, twelve firefighters, maybe fourteen firefighters.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that low. What I recall as being the lowest was around seventeen that were on, that were on paper. But like I've told you before, um, of, of that seventeen, if that was what was on the roster, you probably get about half of those that really participate all the time. So the hope is that you generate interest with new recruits and you get the ones that, that are dedicated and, you know, um, not to say that any of them aren't, but I mean, it's, you have to kind of understand they do get burnt out. They, you know, some of them aren't going to show up because, oh, this is, you know, same old thing. So as they uh retire out, you know, you get new people in. That's your opportunity to kind of train them from, and not have them have any you know, grand illusions that it's, you know, you go in and save people every day, you know, you, that doesn't happen. It's a lot of the mundane type activities, you know, that's where you have to be, you have to be strong and you have to be ready for those times when you do have to go save somebody. So it requires that dedication to train all the time and, and uh learn from the, from, from the other firefighters, you know, what it's all about. So.
Right.
But you got to be there. You know, one of our senior firefighters tells everybody, just show up. And that's so true. Don't think there isn't a spot for you. Don't think there isn't a job you can do. So as we move forward, we have to keep, we have to keep expressing that and teaching these young firefighters that and reminding the senior firefighters that they have a job as well, and that is to train the, to train the younger ones. So we're in a good, we're in a good place right now. You asked about momentum. I think we're, I've seen us turn the corner in terms of participation, interest. Um, not that we were in a bad place. I think it just gets stale because it's the same old, same old. And I think anytime there's a new influx of firefighters uh that don't have that knowledge, there's, there's a desire to train them and get them, teach them the things that you know and make, makes you feel like you're contributing in a, in a different way. And that has happened. So. Yeah, we're in, we're, our momentum is in the right direction. And we just hope that should this not, and I'll, I'll have to foster that and make sure that doesn't happen, that they lose interest or lose hope. So that's going to be a task that we'll have to be prepared for when that happens. And, you know, hopefully it goes through and you know, it's going to make it tougher in a lot of ways. It goes through for, for, for other, you know, there'll be a change. There'll be a, definitely be a change and we'll have to work together. So I hope that answers your question. Not always easy to answer what's, what's going to be in the future because we just don't know. I don't know what's going to happen between now and November that will have someone change their mind if they're against it or, or vice versa, you know, make them forward if they're against it now. Uh, I don't want to see anybody pay anymore. I, I know what, how difficult it is. I do. I'm not, I'm not blind to that. But it's a very, and it's a, people are going to look to you and it's all said and done and know that you're going to have to answer that, well, what have you done with my money? And, and you, hopefully you can, you can show them, you know, you can show, hey, this is what we've done and, and um, you know, that's, that's the goal. To show that it was well worth it. In which I know it will be. I know they'll do a good job for the citizens.
Correct.
They all will.
Yeah, I noticed the um, the last few volunteers and, because I'm getting older as well. So the last few volunteers have come in and they are quite, um, but that's the future of Wariqah and they come with a change. And even our, our time here is um, you know, temporary. And your job is temporary as well. So that's you looking at the future of the department, you know, is what I was looking for, but when you do decide that's your time, your season's done there and then if it's going to be in good hands for the citizens of Wariqah and will they have a fire department that's going to come to their house when it's on fire, if they're going to come when it's a medical, that's very important. So, and, you know, we sit here and decide the future as well for the years to come and we're not going to be sitting here. So this is what you're faced against, what's going to be department in the next many, many years and what's to come. So I appreciate your answering my questions. And um with that, I will open it up to public comment or questions for.
Tim Pope is one of my volunteers here. If you, you know, if he's ready, Tim, if you'd like to say a few words and he's been here. He's also, you know, a, you know, a bit of a clown, but um, he's been in before I was actually a member and got out and got back in and, you know, I recruited him again, or somebody did at some point here several years ago, but he's a huge help and has seen a lot of changes. But if he's willing to kind of give you some insight too on, on his thoughts, that'd be, if you don't mind.
Perfect. Yeah. Mr. Pope, come on down. And then we'll, then we'll open it, then we'll open up public comment or questions and or we'll go to the council actually if they have um questions for Mr. Pope. And then.
Hi, Tim Pope, senior firefighter with the city. Started at age six, took a break here and there, got back in, just hit twenty-one years. I've been a proponent of the tax. I'm trying to explain to people and educate them what's going on with it because the more they see us out there doing our job, especially when we have three or four calls in a five-minute stretch at the same time. And there are six or seven of us. So we go to one, go to the next one and go to the next one and uh they're really appreciative. I haven't had very many people be negative when I talked about in public. Uh, but they just want to make sure that, that the fund is going to go to the hall, to the paid membership and for the equipment. And I said, that's what I understand. That's what I'm going with. So all you got to do is show up and vote. A lot of people are still, you know, they're anti-tax just because it's America and everybody's taxed. I can't really do much about that, but I tell them, you call, we're there. You'll never have a dead spot. Um, we've been to a lot of people's houses multiple times in a day, several times a week. And they're always thankful that we're there. And they understand that we are volunteers, not paid staff. The paid staff that my fellow firefighters and I see coming is basically a break for us. I mean, I'm not going to quit coming, but I'll be able to take a break down there. Like the chief says, I wake up at two o'clock every morning and I'm up until eight o'clock at night the next day. Because that's the way the routine comes with the calls. I'm not going to quit until I physically can't do the job safely and respectfully. What else have I got? Uh, if there's anything you guys can provide me with that I can pass out more to the public so they'll know that this is where it's going, I'd be happy to hand it out. I'm a great, I'm a great paper spreader. See you at Starbucks. You know where I'm at. Um, if you have any questions for me as a, as a firefighter, please feel free to ask. I'll give you the best that I can do. Except for Jake.
Council members first, if there's any questions for Mr. Pope?
Come on, Ted. So if you don't have anything for me, or if you do, um, cell numbers on the wall at the hall or come by there every morning. And thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. Okay, with that, now I'll go to um public for questions or comments for.
Yeah, interesting.
Following our speakers.
Administrator told me a long time ago, A C, A G. Administrations come, administrations go. Councils come and councils go. And I'm going to like to mirror what Tim says. Additional streams of revenue are needed for city general government services. A general tax would not be earmarked for fire safety issues. and could be used for any general use of the city. You're all on board now. But things change and, and people, I've, you know, I've been hearing the same thing. They're saying, yeah, we've heard this before, city dump, right? Current fire coming out of our monthly uh, bill for the water, those types of things that goes on. It's only gonna be for a while. Uh, you, you need to make sure, and by the way, everything's gonna get audited, but that's going in the general funds. That's just a general audit process. So there's no specific thing identified for fire. How are you going to ensure that once you're out of here, because two point three million is not gonna build a fire hall? It probably won't fund a lot of people either by the time we're all said and done. How can we be sure as citizens of Waireka that this money that we're going to be paying will be going for the things that we think they're gonna be going for? I understand you need fifty point one because the last one didn't pass, but we have to have some assurances. So get to it. Thank you.
All right, this ballot measure, Lorenzo Love, uh, Waireka citizen. This ballot measure is written to make the citizens think that all the money is gonna go to the fire department. But you'd know, all know that's just not true. Sixteen April, city council, the uh, city attorney told us, uh, and I quote, it's clear that this is not going to be dedicated to fire or emergency medical response. So what are you gonna spend this money on? Well, on the three uh, three March meeting, you told us what you're gonna spend it on. Municipal activities across the board. Senior and youth recreation. For the city in general. Magron hospice. Programs that end up getting run through YMCA. Because ultimately the city council now and the city council in the future will have the general, they'll have the ability to utilize this funding for the general fund. Your potholes, your parks, your administrative staff. Youth recreation, again. It could be utilized in a number of different fashions. You uh, you think at this a special tax couldn't pass because it requires a two thirds majority. It certainly will never pass if you don't put it on the ballot. You act like you don't want this, the fire department to have money because then you couldn't use it for all this other stuff. It's time to step up in the twenty-first century with a special tax measure. It gives all the money to the fire department and not just whatever's left over from all this other crap.
Domriatri, um, I have a stupid question. I haven't heard anyone ask this at all and I'm wondering, how long will it take to build this fire department? Do we know? Do we have any idea? Um, I know that we're thinking that within a year we'll get twenty-four million. Are we going to get a loan like right now? I mean, just as soon as this passes, say if you put this measure on the ballot, it passes. Are we gonna get a loan for building the fire department and start right away? So those are the two questions I have. And I also want to know, can the city council spend this money for a new pool? Because you and I have talked about it and that matters to you more than, almost more than it sounded to me like the fire department. So before you leave office, you want that done. So.
Please don't put words.
No, that's what we talked about.
I know, but don't put words on it.
Go back and forth, please. Point of order and please refer to your questions and accusations to our council.
So um, and I'm wondering, you know, can the, can the city take it to pay for new hires? I know that you talked about having, you know, accounting for this, but as it's been brought up, it's going to the general fund. It'll be a, just a general fund tax. Just a general fund audit. It's not special. And that's the whole deal. The special tax goes to the special. It will go to the fire department, period. And you know, I haven't just met the fire department. If they've got so much money, they, they want to, they'll give the city money if they need money. If the pool needs money, the fire department will give it to the, the pool. And instead of, because it's not about you people, it's about the people that come after you. You know? In ten years, this money is no longer gonna go to the fire department. It's gonna go to the city because it's grown so big. If it's a special tax, it'll still be going to the fire department. And if we are eleven thousand people, we're gonna need a bigger fire department, aren't we? And by then, you know, our fire, fire, fire department will be ten years old. And then what? And our twenty years old and then what? It needs to be a special tax.
Louise Gliauto, Waireka, um, I had an occasion to experience the fire department firsthand. It certainly wasn't planned and um, I had not taken a CPR class for fourteen years. It'd been that long and I had to start CPR on a friend. And thank God that the episode happened in Waireka near the fire department and they were there right away. I truly believe that the fire department saved my friend's life, not me. Because being defibrillated immediately is what saves lives. The faster you do that, the more chance you have to live. And so I have very high regard for the fire department and I think that we do, I do highly support them. I think we need to be paying these folks because that day there were three, there were three um, episodes. They had, we were the second episode and after they left us, they went to a third. And I don't know how these guys do it because I was affected from doing that for a whole week. I was having nightmares about what had happened. And so coming down from a situation like that, I don't know how they do that. I mean, it's amazing to me. So I have true respect for them. However, I am going to say, and this scares me, I'm actually agreeing with Lorenzo and Mr. White, uh, that I really believe that you would have more support for this tax. I really think we need to have a tax. I'm not disputing that at all. I totally agree with it, but I think it should be a special tax. Because a lot of people I, that I've talked to have concerns that that money will not be spent. It will not be earmarked. And like Mr. White said and what Lorenzo says, that some of you may not be on the city council in a year or two. And there'll be different people on the city council. I wanna know that that money is going to our fire department and it's not gonna go to build a swimming pool or it's gonna be taken away from them. And I really think that you could get that two thirds passed. If you, if you, if you tell the public that this is what you're going to do, that has been their concern and my concern that it's not gonna be special. So I totally support the fire department. I think we do need paid people. I don't know how they have continued to do this. And um, I would like to see you maybe consider making a special tax and I will, I will actually campaign for you to get it passed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there further comments from um, our city attorney or city manager? At this time? Nope. Okay. Oh. Oh, I thought you were leaving. Sorry.
If, is there a particular question you wanted?
No, I did. I thought you were leaning forward to that.
Oh, no, no.
Get my attention. So no, thank you. All right. Oh yeah, you can be coming with us.
I'd like to, uh, this is council.
If that's a question, then I have to open back up this uh, public comment because it could be a question. This is comment. Okay.
I'd like to make a comment because I think there's many um, opinions and as many um, I'm trying to think of the word to say, as many falsehoods that are believed by people as you see on any, on any sort of um, issue, whether it's a president or a senator or a, or uh, building a new highway or a new Walmart or I've heard great stuff about Wendy's and how Wendy's is backed out of a deal. And they're not coming to Waireka. And I've heard about other things that are coming to Waireka and there's a Bevmo coming. And I heard there's gonna be a Lowe's put in Waireka and that's all just in the last year and a half. And you know, people, we just, we have questions. And so um, it's, it's important to try and answer those questions for people, but um, I um, I, I wanna say that number one, we're not getting twenty-four million dollars the first year. Um, we're not getting twenty-four million. We, we think we'll get about two point three million. I wanna say that um, we don't know probably how long it's gonna take us to build the fire hall. But it could be like anything. I know when uh, I just finished a construction project. There was commercial on the south side of town. We've been in it a year and a half and I think it took us probably twenty-two months because of un, COVID and other things like that. And it was eleven thou, get eleven thousand three hundred square foot building. Um, so I mean, you know, a year, eighteen months. I mean, however long it takes, we wanna get it done right. That's, that's what we do want. Um, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure where uh, city dump and our current fire come in together because our city dump, I don't know, it's been closed for, didn't, did it close when you were still working for the city, Mr. Pope?
I had.
Okay, yeah. So I mean, I know that the city had it ready to stay open uh, thirty years and there was, there were some issues that came up. Now they had it lined for thirty years, which is what the EP, US EPA asked for and the city was not uh, remiss there. Um, they did their due diligence. Um, when we, and I'm gonna speak only for myself, but when we enter into a contract with somebody to build a building like a police station, our chief is gone or, or a fire department, we don't go in and spend, we don't, we don't have twenty million dollars to spend. We don't spend twenty million and go, hey, we're done. We're done. It's eighteen months. We're done. Let's take this money now and let's build a pool. Now I think we should build some new playgrounds and I think we should do some potholes and I think we should maybe build a, a little nightclub for the youth of our, of our community. No, we don't do that. We're committed to forty years to a loan. We're paying that loan for forty years. For any council member or any city manager to decide they're gonna take the money that's gonna be paying on that loan for that year and put it into a pool or somewhere else, they're A, immediately gonna be fired and B, council is gonna be recalled. It's not gonna happen. It's not gonna, imagine if, imagine if we did that on the, here on the police department. We just go ahead and decide we're gonna default. That's gonna put the city into a whale of trouble. Uh, not only locally, but with bond ratings and everything else. And, and you all I know are intelligent enough to know that, but I, I do wanna remind you of that. We're not gonna default. Um, and you know, our, our, our fire chief said, we can proceed the way we are. We're cool. We're cool. He hopes in ten years that we can staff and we can respond to um, calls, but you know, I mean, that's, maybe we will, maybe we won't. I'm not calling on you either. I'm just, I mean, you know, I'm being very honest. Um, the money that we're asking for is earmarked for the fire hall, for paid staff and for in the fire hall. Paid staff in the fire hall, not paid staff in city council, uh, in the, in, in the over here, not paid staff at the police department, not paid staff at the pool, not paid staff on the roads. It's not earmarked for that. Okay, we're gonna use, we're not gonna, it's not gonna be used for other stuff. I think I can speak for all five of us on that. If we support it, we wanna see it, we wanna see it left. Uh, we're not gonna, as somebody said, pay for other crap. We're not, we're not gonna do that with the money. Um, pool's a separate project. That came up. Pool's a separate project. That's something that I'll continue to work on. Things I ran, I ran on were pool and a firehouse and uh, potholes and things like that. But the pool is something that Mr. Ledbetter has had a vision on since he came on and he has been working on it with this council as we sit here tonight. He has been working on a funding mechanism and a way through to a pool. It's unfortunate that we had past councils that sat on their thumbs and refused to make a decision and refused to keep that pool up or we'd still have it. And I'll say it, I don't care. I'll say it to their faces. I mean, I've told them before, but that's a separate project. If we grow, our tax base grows. So what does that mean? That means more money. If we have eleven thousand people here, we have more sales tax dollars coming in and we have more um, property tax coming in. So that increases. Um, and finally, I think I'm hoping, knowing uh, Mr. Uh, the, the chief as I do, um, that when he's working with our city manager and when he is working with our um, architect, should we build something new? That they're looking forward, I think forty years. That's what they're looking at. Rather than looking back ninety-one or ninety-two years, which is what we're doing now. So I mean, we all wanna do what's right. I, you all wanna do what's right and I appreciate your comments and we all, all wanna do what's right. But we also need to understand what the truth is. And we all need, also, we all need to understand why we're doing this and how we want to do it. And I don't, there's not a, I can sit here and say, there's not a council member here that I think wants to take money away from the fire hall and move it somewhere else. And for those of you who don't believe in audits, there are, we, when, when a place gets audited, whether it's public or private, there are uh, demands that are put on the staff and on the agency to make sure that these audits are upheld and that corrections are made and they are written and you know, I ju, I just wanna say that. So I just, cause I hear so many and I'm gonna, I hear so many different people around town telling me what they've heard. And if you wanna, if you wanna know what's going on, you need to come talk to the source. Talk to one of us, talk to Jerry, talk to Tim. I mean, I've, like I said, Tim's been on and off there a couple of times. I see, Tim does mo, more things by six o'clock in the morning than I think most people do in twenty-four hours uh, in this community. I see him all around. So, and talk to the other firefighters. That's why we put you on the hot seat tonight, sir. We wanted to know. Because if it's not worth it, we shouldn't even, we shouldn't even go for this. There's no reason to go for it. So I thank you for your candor. I thank you for your comments. Um, and I just wanna make sure that that, that the council and the fire department are being heard for what they are, not for what could be. Thank you.
I think that's my quiet. Okay. Okay. So back to agenda, item number eight. A. This is the approval of the resolution to press, place a ballot measure before the voters of November fourth, twenty twenty for general election to prove a one percent transaction use ta, uh, and use tax funding exemption from SEQA. Additional streams of revenue are needed for the general fund or general government service. Additional streams of revenue are needed for the general fund or general government services. This includes the necessary staffing, equipment, and the physical improvements associated with the fire department. A general tax would be an earmarked for fire safety issues and could be used for general use of the city. The recommended city council action before use, a, or, no, sorry, approval of Resolution 2024-29A, Resolution City Council, the City of Wairika, California, one on its own motion, calling for an election for November 5th, 2024, to consider an ordinance on a proposed 1% transactions and use tax to be submitted to the electors of the City of Wairika, two, requesting consolidation of the election with the statewide general election on the same date. Three, directing the city attorney to prepare an imperial analysis of the measure, and four, finding that the adoption of this resolution is exempt from SEQA.
Yes.
Um, there's also the
Oh, did I miss anything?
Recommendation that the argument for, um, the measure be, um, identified who from the council would be preparing, uh, and authoring that, that recommendation. So, whatever motion is proposed, that's recommended that you identify those two council members.
Okay. Councilman McCoy? Okay. Councilman McCoy? Oh. To write it, or, okay. I have one council member.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Of Councilman McCoy, who is, yeah.
Well, I'm in here. I should not be wondering about.
Oh, yes. Councilmaker?
Well, I'm gonna step out here, um, on a limb because I have read, um, the parameters of the audit that's going to be required if this measure is passed as a general tax. And so, I would like to make the motion that the city council adopt Resolution uh, 2024-29, which calls for an election for November 5th, 2024, to consider an ordinance on the proposed 1% transaction and use tax to be submitted to the electors of the City of Wairika, requesting consolidation of said election with the statewide general election on the same date, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure, finding that the adoption of this resolution is exempt from SEQA. And I would also like, uh, to include in that motion that, uh, Councilmember, uh, McCoy and Councilmember Davis be approved to write, uh, the argument in favor of.
What are you, what are you looking?
I second that motion. Okay. I have a, uh, motion by Councilman Baker, and then a second from Councilman Davis. I'll do real call. Yeah, Councilman Kay.
Hi.
Councilman Davis.
Hi.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Hi.
Hi. And Mayor Middleton, the pa, the motion passes five to zero. All right. Thank you, everybody. Okay. So, we go to item number 11. City manager and staff report. City manager and staff may make brief announcements or reports at this time. Mr. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wairika City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. So, uh, just a brief report here. On the evening of May 22nd, I sat on the interview panel for the Fort Jones Administrator position. Uh, I've let the council know I'm available to sit in on this interview panel as many times as needed. Uh, at this moment, I don't believe they filled the vacancy. Uh, Matt Bray and I met with Sean Walton. He is going to be the future president of the Wairika Rotary. Uh, and we did this to discuss a couple of joint projects for, in beautification opportunities. And so, in the past, you'll recall that Wairika Rotary has helped, uh, they funded to replace the wooden benches and tables at Greenhorn Park uh, to the cement benches that last much longer in those elements out there. And so, with that being completed, Wairika Rotary is now transitioning to replacing the downtown garbage cans with cans that look more like the Deer Creek metal cans that we've, uh, installed over there. So, that's pretty exciting because if you do go through downtown Minor and Broadway, you'll see that our garbage cans, uh, appear to be falling apart. On Thursday, May 30th, I toured the Greenway specifically from Oberland to Public Health with, uh, Wairika Police Department and Mayor Middleton and Councilmember Baker. On Friday, May 31st, I, uh, had a moment to attend the Wairika's Farmers Market on Minor Street. Although produce options open up vastly a bit later in the season, the energy and vendors gave a very upbeat and positive feeling to the street and the beauti, beautification efforts. I just want to continue to, to just put this person kind of in the forefront. Uh, the planners that Tammy Sullivan has worked on are just unbelievable. I mean, they look ridiculously amazing. So, very thankful for that. This morning, I met with Housing Tools about the state funding for Home Key projects this summer. Uh, it had appeared that they were getting removed. The funding was being taken away. Now, it appears from, uh, Housing Tools that Home Key will be funded to the tune to, they're claiming about $160 million. Uh, so, we expect the NOFA to drop sometime in July, and we're going to work up a proposal to bring to city council on a possible grant for you guys to review and vote on. Uh, Crossroads tour tomorrow. Councilmember Baker had asked for a tour. I'm very interested to check that out. And Mayor Middleton is going to join us tomorrow afternoon. So, very curious to see what Crossroads looks like. And then, not this coming Friday, but, uh, you, there will be a Farmers Market this coming Friday, but I want to point out that, uh, next Friday, there will be the Farmers Market from three to six. That'll lead right into the first concert in the park series, which there'll be three of this summer. Uh, and then Golden City Days, I believe. Are you having your breakfast on Sunday? So, Sunday, Father's Day will be the Fireman's Breakfast. There'll also be the Car Show and the Saw Hop, and then obviously Golden City Days. So, a very exciting weekend for downtown Wairika, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Let's members, let's go first. Should I change it up and go first for change?
Is that okay?
Sure.
All right. I might as well. Nobody's jumping up. Okay, first of all, as, um, the city better, Ledbetter stated that, uh, myself, Councilman Baker, um, along with, uh, Lieutenant Dirksen and our chief police, Mark Gilman, um, did tour the Greenway with, uh, problems we are having down there, and the, the issues we do need to address. So, we did, um, take a tour of that area. Um, so, we're very aware of what needs to be done and what's going on down there. Um, I did attend the, uh, Farmers Market. I had a lot of friends out of town, uh, for not a great occasion for memorial service for one of our, um, friend's parents, but we all got together, but we, a few of them went downtown with me, and we did support a local restaurant. And so, it's good to have your friends come into town and, um, they're friends that I have grown up with, and, um, they talked about me, talked with me about the challenges Wairika has had, what they've seen since they have lived here. Um, and some shocking, but they also said, because they were here two years ago for something, and they said that they see a change. They see, um, things getting better. That, um, so, that was good to hear because they have been here. And, um, I agree with them. Is it perfect? No, I think we can all agree there's still work to be done. But it was nice to hear that since they've been here in two years, them coming back here, seeing Minor Street. Someone bought a few items in mind, the Minor Street shops, and it could have been a couple of items, but for that shop owner who stayed open till six o'clock that night, it was probably um, a purchase they wouldn't have made, that Farmers Market wasn't down there. So, it was great to have, be able to pick them somewhere. They shopped local, they supported local. They stay in our hotels. They noticed a difference. They asked me about Main Street. Um, they're from the city, so their use of construction and the mess, and they said it'll be great when they get done, um, done with it. So, um, they didn't mind driving through a lot of the obstacles, and, um, they were surprised of all the changes that were going to be made. So, it was great to hear. I took, I took some hits too of what they saw that was a disgust, and, but also I heard some good. So, it was great to have your friends. They weren't too nice to me on some things, but they were pretty nice on a lot of things that they see changing here in our town that they grew up in. So, unfortunately, they cannot come back here to work. Um, a lot of their parents have moved, or unfortunately, we're getting to that age where they have passed away, like I said. Um, but they, um, seen it when it was back in the day. They seen the struggles we have. They are see uptick and, um, great things happening. So, um, it was a great weekend overall for me to have them come here, spend time with them, spend time downtown, see the city, um, the Farmers Market down there. And, um, one thing that I will mention real quick so I don't forget, and, um, if Mr. Ledbetter can note, is just so we can correct and make, uh, some citizens understand that there's only that top portion of Minor Street closed. There's, um, some misinformation out there that the whole Minor Street is closed for that event, and it's not. So, if we can just have them maybe correct in their advertising, they say Minor Street is just that top version. So, if we can maybe do that, that'd be great. Um, with that, I will end and wish everybody, um, near and far in our community, happy Pride Month for June. Everybody, a, um, happy Father's Day, and everybody that is graduating from elementary school, high school, preschool, pre-K. It seems like everybody gets a graduations these days. Um, a happy graduation as well. So, it'll be a busy June. It's gonna be a busy summer in, uh, Wairika and Siski County. So, um, with that, who wants to go next? Councilmaker.
Thank you. Thank you for that, um, positive report. That's, that's good to hear.
You're welcome.
I, I appreciate, um, hearing positive things. So, um, I attended, I of course went on a tour of, uh, the Greenway. Um, and, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Ledbetter for, um, arranging that. And I'm looking forward to the tour of Crossroads tomorrow. Um, I had a really interesting conversation with the, uh, executive director. I don't know if that's the correct title, but the executive director of Project Base Camp. And I think that, uh, the city and the county are so fortunate to have such a knowledgeable person who's overseeing this project. And I'm really looking forward, um, to the shelter opening. And I think it's in really good hands. I really do. So, um, that gives me a little bit of peace about how things are moving forward, um, for the City of Wairika, um, in that arena. Um, on May 23rd, I attended the, um, C2C meeting, and at that meeting, um, the, uh, long-term executive director, Grace Bennett, um, she's been involved in that organization from its inception, which is over 30 years. She actually, uh, resigned her position. Um, and, uh, so, um, she has put her heart and soul into the, this JPA. So, if you see, uh, Mrs. Bennett around, you might want to pat her on the back and thank her. Um, and, uh, then I noticed the beautiful lighting that's going up on Main Street. The other day I went, huh! I looked above all of the, uh, the traffic cones and, and saw the lighting that's going in, and it, it really is very, very pretty. So, I'm excited for this project to be done, just like everybody else, but I really appreciated seeing the lights go up. So, that's what I have.
Right.
Any maneuvered still between the cones with looking up? You still do good. See?
I don't dare try. I'll run over somebody.
I, I'm, I will admit I hit a cone the other day, but someone else hit it in front of me and knocked it out. So, it wasn't my fault. Councilman Davis?
You look eager to go.
My, uh, uh, Fire Safety Council meeting, I was out of town, and I wasn't able to attend. Um, so, and I didn't Zoom. I didn't have the, my computer with me. So, I have nothing to report there. But Mr. Perkins spoke here tonight, and he's been doing some house hardening and and, uh, safety precautions with uh, handouts and flyers and stuff, and it's very, 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 uh, informative. So, we should get, a look at that. If you haven't, you should take a look. I think he sends it to you via the email. It's worth a read.
That's it. Short and sweet. Okay. Councilman Kay?
Hi.
He's eating.
So, I just, I just want to start off, um, thanking Chief Lemus and actually, uh, Steve Radford for here, uh, a week or so ago, I've been, actually, it was on, uh, on, uh, or a holiday, that Chief Lemus, uh, called me and looking for some assistance on a homeless vet that was having some major struggles. And I, uh, called Steve Radford. He wanted to get involved on helping homeless vets, uh, uh, thank you, chief, because that, you know, I've made a big difference in his world. And Steve jumped up there, jumped up to, stepped up to the plate, I should say, and helped this homeless vet. I was wishing, I was hoping Steve was here to give him a, a personal thank you in front of everybody because this guy needed some serious help, and we had two people, and this is what our fire department's about though, not just fighting fires, not just calling for some medical. This is a guy that's had numerous medical calls, and our chief took it to another level on helping him out. He didn't have to do this.
Thank you, Jerry.
But he stepped up and did, made the call to help out this guy. And that's, that's what our firefighters are about, for personal touch, our community, helping them out, and making phone calls to help out somebody that's in need, not just doing their job, but above and beyond. So, thank you, chief. I appreciate that. And I know he appreciates it, and Steve did too. So, thank you. Um, other things, uh, we do have the, uh, our COC meeting tomorrow. Some of the things we are going to be having an update on Crossroads, the Palace shelters, um, just gonna have an update tomorrow. Um, so, there'll be some good updates on that, would in conjunction to it. Um, I did jo, I did have my point in time committee meeting. We're taking two months break, and we're actually, there's, um, funding out there to, I think I mentioned this before, to hire on a director to, to oversee that point in time um, committee. So, I don't have to oversee it this next few months, though I'm still in office. Um, so, there'd be hopefully a, a void that needs to be filled, um, on that when it comes to the point in time committee and, and, uh, when it comes to the COC also here at the end of this year. So, I look at the council as a whole, that somebody's gonna have to step up to the plate when I get off the council, that we're gonna need somebody to step up and run the show when it comes to the homeless situation. Um, Mr. McCoy and I have toured all over town, and I think you mentioned this last time, um, checking out the homeless situation. I mean, I, I do it on a weekly basis. So, everywhere that, uh, Mr. White was mentioning is actually worse than that. There's actually over 20 some camps on the Greenway between Oberland Road and behind the Forest Service buildings, because I counted them. Um, so, yeah, there's definitely an issue, and we're addressing it. Um, so, most of our challenges are going to be, um, once, are going to be helped when they, when these, um, shelters opened up and stuff like that. So, we're really going to be addressing it in a positive way. Um, it's gonna look, it's gonna change for our community once we get some, the tools to work with to fix these issues. Um, Mr. White also mentioned the, uh, Greenhorn Park and the blacksmith shop and some of the other stuff. Um, I actually met with Ben Miller. I didn't mention this before. I met with, uh, met with Ben Miller. I'm actually looking for some volunteers, Mr. White. If, uh, if you're willing and able, I'd love to have some volunteers. I got a couple other volunteers that want to help, um, overhaul the blacksmith shop. We're just trying to get some supplies rounded up. So, as soon as we get that figured out, I'll be calling on volunteers. So, if you're all for it, I'm looking for volunteers. We're gonna start with the roof, we're gonna move around to the siding, and then work our way kind of um, east on that, on that project. So, one piece at a time. And I thank Mr. Ledbetter and, and, uh, Ben Miller for, uh, getting me involved in it, because I'm, we're gonna, I'm, I'm really excited about getting involved in that, um, especially any Greenhorn projects. Um, I think that's about it. So, we'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Councilman Kay. Councilman McCoy. Councilman McCoy?
Yeah, I'll try and go quickly. I think, thanks again, Ted. I appreciate your reports because we, you were visiting the Greenway and I, we're working with our city manager and staff to try and get certain things done. We were actually encountering a guy out there at the bridge. And, and at the one that you were talking about that half it's down, half it's not down. And he was actually cleaning the moss out of the
Fixing it.
Fix, yeah, he's a local kid. He's a Karuk. And he was actually, he had fixed one side, but was working on getting moss and stuff. And so it's, it's good to have that though. I want to commend YPD. I had a barbecue today for three of my classes at Lower Greenhorn. And so we had about 70 kids and adults. You guys were in and out of there a lot. We had somebody that was sleeping and parents weren't worried about him, but the staff was. And one of the staff members just went over. He just went over and said, hey, you need to move along. She was way on the other side of the soccer field, but they were, they're wonderful. So, you know, we want to commend them for that. I, I want to commend concrete. I've stopped and talked to the concrete and medical contractors. Royal is the electoral and I don't know who's doing concrete, but they're doing a super job. They're moving quickly. You know, trying to get out of the way of the asphalters that are coming along. Let's see, I, I do want to say that I had, I've talked to the owner of the Mings building and they're hoping to open within eight to 12 weeks. So you know, they had a fire at Christmas. I want to commend who Skip works for as he leaves, Siski Daily News, and also the Reading Record Searchlight owned by the same company, ran some very thorough, accurate articles on the homeless issues or the unhoused issues or whatever you want to call it here in Waireca and what Waireca is doing about it. And the $160 million that's coming to Home Key, that's going to be key to us, Mr., this council and Mr. Ledbetter and his staff have worked tirelessly on our last application that ended up because we couldn't, we, we had some issues with the property, the price and everything. But and, and I know, I know you're on top of it and your staff, when the money comes out to try and get back out there. And again, I think that'll help Mr. K with the homeless, some of the homeless issues. I will say the Farmers Market was wonderful. I, I'm going to tell you that I had a staycation on a three day weekend. I spent all my money in Waireca, not only on gas, but but I spent, I mean, I, we ate out lunch and stuff down at Bella Arts and, and Strings and, you know, went out, out here and spent our money. And you know, we kind of, we thought, well, we're not, we, we want to see how much money we spend. We figured we probably spent about $300 over a three day weekend. And you know, that, you know, that we're pretty fortunate to have that. Number one, and number two, we were fortunate to be able to put it out there in the community because those, those dollars come back to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McCoy. One other comment on my outing out, I found it kind of funny and people who have lived in the city can relate. Would, we did attend another restaurant. Seems like all I did was eat the whole weekend. We did another restaurant on Saturday night as well. And one of our friends picked up the tab, we're all going to chip in. And she says, I have not seen a bill this cheap in forever. I guess I'm used to the city prices. So she picked up the tab. We had a laugh because it's relevant, right? When we go out, you know, because of income, but where she lives, it would have been probably $100, $150 more for what we ordered. And so she said, it's on me because I never see a bill with this cheap with teenagers. My husband, me and a couple of friends, it's usually, and there was eight of us. And so she was saying how it was double in the city with four people. So I thought it was kind of funny because it's all relevant. But anyways, with that note, thank you, everybody for coming and have a good evening. Be safe. Good night.